Wednesday afternoon. Mike, do you want to do these executive sessions first? Is that your preference?
Yes, if we could.
Okay. So we're going to take them all three at the same time?
If we could, yes.
Yeah. Contract negotiations, five minutes. Real estate purchase, lease, 15 minutes. And contract negotiations, 10 minutes.
Correct.
Okay, let's do that.
Right. Thank you.
The board is extending the executive sessions for a period of ten minutes until two oh twelve P M.
The board is extending the executive sessions for a period of ten minutes until two oh twelve P M.
Okay, we're back from executive session. No decisions were rendered. I think it looks like we have a couple more items.
We do. Mike Moss, Public Services Director. Next time I have is parking lot maintenance. So as we've talked quite a bit about the north parking lot here between north of Admin, removing trees, all that fun stuff. So this is the weekend we start the work. Removing the trees or starting to remove the trees on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. We're going to email out to staff later this afternoon. So this is phase one. So we're going to remove and replace the trees, also remove the stumps, upgrade the light poles, grind and pave the parking lot, replace the curbs, stripe the parking lot, and clean or remove that white vinyl fence. So Griny Tree Service is doing the work along with Public Works, starting on Friday. Like I said, it'll take three weekends to us to remove those trees and the stumps. We'll put some barricades out Thursday evening. So we'll have nobody in that parking lot over this weekend. So.
But when Monday rolls around, they'll be able to roll back in there.
Get back in there. Yeah, we'll make sure it's open for the work week. We'll send out a press release tomorrow.
It'll certainly look different.
It will. We've got a few people already concerned about it. We did reach out to the city of Castle Rock because we don't know exactly what direction we want to take on the trees yet for replacement wise. Commissioner Adal told me that the city of Castle Rock's redoing some landscaping mainly on Huntington Avenue. They gave me some suggestions of trees that they're replacing it with. The afterburner black gum tree is what they're replacing by the elementary school in Castle Rock. And that tree, it states here.
It's supposed to have roots that go down.
Exactly. This tree roots grow deep into the ground. It won't ruin your beautiful landscape or crack your sidewalks and driveway. Plus many wildfire black gums live for more than 70 years. And they're kind of an orange looking tree. So after we disturb this north lot over the next three weekends, we're going to take a quick, a good look to see are we going to do something with planters in that middle area? Or if we're actually going to just keep it a green space and plant these type of trees there? Either way, there will be trees in place to replace these ones. But we will figure out what kind of, what we're up against once we start tearing it in there. So either way, it'll look a lot better. Initially, people will be a little disappointed, especially this time of year. You know, if you take the trees out in December when they look bad, it's not a big deal. But now they're beautiful green trees and all of a sudden we'll.
I know if they're all beaved out, they look kind of nice. There you go.
Exactly. So but it has to be done. You know, you guys been in the north parking lot. You can see the damage it does.
You just tell anybody that's Commissioner District number one.
Naturally. You're not adding any parking spaces, just redoing what's there.
Correct. Yeah. Exactly right. So yeah, that this weekend. So we'll be ready for complaints. We know they're coming our way.
You know, when that's all done and that lot is smoothed out and stuff, that'll be nice.
Yeah, it will be. Still, as you all know, a city street on the end there that we're not touching at this point. So I don't think the city of Kelso is moving forward with any projects in that area.
Kelso, right?
That's correct.
And we can't really touch it. Yeah.
But they'll feel bad after our parking lot looks so good that they'll want to improve their street.
Check the weather. You sure it's not going to rain?
Just a little bit. That's fine. Keep the dust down. So I believe the next one is Susan with Army Corps of Engineers.
Good afternoon, Susan Eugenous, County Engineer. I'm glad you guys took a long time on executive session so I can talk really fast and confuse you. So but I will give you a kind of a brief rundown. So last week, the Army Corps held their annual meeting with the Dyking districts to discuss the results of the 2024 bathometric survey. So I printed out five of the slides that were presented during that meeting, and I'll give you kind of the rundown. So the first sheet you have shows the two maps where it shows the cross-section locations and then what their level of protection is for each Dyking area. So there are four Dyking areas that they have level of protection authority over the Castle Rock district where they have authority for. So hydrologists have gone away from the 100-year storm and we're now doing probability. So we're used to hearing that they have a level of protection for the 118-year storm. And that just means that it's supposed to occur once in every 118 years. Now they're calling it the 0.85% chance of occurrence every year. Because you can have 118-year storm every year, then you have to change data. But you can have two in the same year or multiple years. So they want to get away from that nomenclature. So Castle Rock has the 0.85% chance of occurrence, formerly known as 118 years. Lexington has 167 years, which is the 0.6% chance of occurrence. Kelso, which includes both north and south, Kelso has a 0.7% chance of recurrence, which is 143 years. And then Longview is 167 years like Kelso. So Slide four has the graph that shows both what the authorized level of protection, which are the dashed lines down towards the bottom of the graph, and what they have tracked since 2009. As you can see, Kelso and Longview are the two lines up at the top, which is the 500-year protection, which is the 2/10ths of a percent chance of recurrence. And the two lower lines are Castle Rock and Lexington. Most notably, if you look from 2022 moving forward, both have seen a decline in the level of protection, but they are still both above the authorized level. So I have a bunch more slides than you guys do, talking about what the hydraulic year looked like and information about the sediment plane. But I knew we had a short time and how the SRS is performing. So I moved on to sedimentation in the Cowitz River, because I know this is a topic that a lot of people are talking about. So that third slide shows the reach from just north of Castle Rock, so from the mouth of the Toodle all the way down to the Columbia River. The little red lines are where they take cross-sections. And then it has some information about points of interest along the river, which shows the year that Castle Rock upgraded its levee for a seepage cutoff wall. The island bar deposits that have grown north of Castle Rock, which has caused 50 feet of bank erosion since 2013. The pinch point, which is down just north of here at Rocky Point, so in between Lexington and north Kelso. And that pinch point is where we transition to our really sandy gravel bars down here, where the sandy bars that are more like sand dunes down at this mouth of the river because of the grade drops. And so we have much more finer sediments. So if you jump to the next page, this is that cross-section where the bar has formed. So they show, they've included a couple pictures and they've included the cross-section from 2013 to 2024. And you can see how it has changed. So in 2013, which is a blue, you can see that in the center of the cross-section, it was at a low point. And since then, it has added about five. it was at a low point, and since then, it has added about five feet of sediment since those first two years. And you can see how the river is shifting to the right bank, that everybody is noticing the erosion. And it's also shift to the left bank. So, that's why when the Corps says there's the same volume available for the river, this is what they're referring to. Yes, they're recognizing that we do have a bar in the river now, but this is why they're saying we still have the same capacity to move water down the river. I always refer to the Calitz as a toddler, because it is a young river due to the eruption, so it's still trying to find its path where it wants to be. The next two slides, or the last slide that I included, is cross-sections down here at the mouth of the river, where you can see how the thou lag moves around with the shifting channel. Just kind of a reference, so that you can see, yes, we have sandbars where we didn't have them before, but some of the old ones we have have disappeared, so the capacity of the river has not changed significantly. So they are about to go out for their request for proposals for the monitoring for 2025. I know that was really fast, and I'm sure there's questions.
If the level of protection dips below a certain level, 100 years or 125, whatever the threshold is, it automatically trigger dredging or other avenues?
So the supplemental EIS for the Mount St. Helens project, I don't believe it's in the whole packet, but I can pull, there's a decision matrix in that report, where if it hits this threshold, they're supposed to raise the SRS, which they've started the design on because they see that downward trend. And then there's also a decision if it reaches a certain level that they would come out and dredge. I don't have that at my fingertips, but they have a decision matrix in that supplemental EIS that they did. Oh, yes, I do have it. It's just really tiny, and it's not included in what I handed out to you, and I can't read that. I'd need a magnifying glass. But I can bring that decision matrix and share it with the commissioners that they have in place that's supposed to trigger their actions.
Yeah, I know I'm just a country bumpkin and don't understand a lot of the stuff, but when I look at these 100 years, 167 years, I'm like, could you get the weather right in 48 hours? You know, those types of things I look at, and I just, I'm not sure how much to really put in stock, to put into this when we can't get the five-day forecast correct, so.
And it boggles people's mind, because it is a model, so it's only as good as the data that you put into it. And so every year, we get another data point, so every year, what the 167-year storm is, changes. So, let's take for 1996, for example. Originally, that was supposed to be a 100-year storm, but as they did more analysis, oh no, that was not a 100-year storm. They backed off on the number two. It's a 93-year storm, I think, is what they're saying now. So as they get more data and add more information, the model will change. And so what was a 100-year storm is no longer a 100-year storm, because we have more data points. And that is actually one of the things that the Corps is requesting, because the model that they're running with right now only has the data in it. So when they model the water surface elevation, only has water surface data through 20, I believe it's 10, might be 13. But we're missing the big event in 2015 and the subsequent years. So one of the things that the Corps would like to do moving forward, in addition to the bathymetric study, is to get enough funding that they can revise the model to include that extra data that we've been collecting through the years. So the water surface elevation is based on, and the storm event is based on the rainfall and what you're seeing in the stream gauges. So currently, there's a gauge across the river here in Kelso. There's the Castle Rock gauge that, so the one in Kelso, NOAA operates. There's a Castle Rock gauge and a Toodle gauge that USGS operates in 2017. I might be wrong on the year, plus or minus two years. Lexington Flood Control Zone District had a gauge and state installed that is continuous monitoring that ecology monitors. So they're getting more and more data, and so they want to refine the model.
Is that a little bit on the conversation we had with David Hodges the other day, where when they asked for that, that would be the time where we try and get him to expand to look at river migration and erosion type things?
So, yes and no. So once they get, so their authorization, they can update that model as part of their authorization for the level of protection. I believe in some of the conversations we've had, David, not this week, but previous ones, we were talking about updating the WERDA, which is the Water Resources, and that would be when you ask them to include the river migration, but start setting that seed now. I believe WERDA will be reauthorized next year.
Next year, I think, is when it's coming out.
Yeah, so we would need to start working on that sometime soon to start saying, hey, we need this reauthorized to include these additional items.
Well, I think one of the things that you said with the river still trying to find its path is largely because of all the dredge spoils, it's going to wash it into the river. And now you have a river instead of being, I don't know, 60 feet wide, 30 feet deep. Now all of a sudden, it's 120 feet wide and 15 feet deep. So the water level's still the same, but it's spread out a hell of a lot wider. And it's washing away the sediment and stuff that they pumped out of the river. It's now going back into the river. But I don't agree with their logic.
It's more of the sediment is defining the path.
Yeah, the sediment they put out there. And we can't do anything about restricting.
So that's my short version of what I found out from the Corps. I'm also working with the Corps. They did reach out about starting to look for potential dredge spoil sites to set up a preliminary meeting. So I'm trying to get that arranged also, in case they hit that trigger where we have to judge the river. So you two have not been involved in it, but we, the county, so the US Army Corps of Engineers can only have agreements with the state. So in the 80s, the initial agreement was with the state of Washington. Sometime between 85 and the early 90s, the state delegated through an inter-local agreement, the county to be the representative with the Corps. So that is why I am the Corps' contact for this project, because the state has delegated it to the county. So we have an existing agreement with the state, because they are the ones responsible for paying for finding the dredge spoil sites. And they are responsible for the fish handling that goes on in relation to the SRS. So, I've reached out to the state to get involved in this meeting, because what happens is the county, or what happened in the past, the county went out and did the negotiations and the purchases, and the state paid for it. And that is how the existing agreement stands. I have also reached out to the state, because that agreement expires in June, to get that moving to either be reauthorized, or they need to take back the responsibility.
So, did you say that the Corps would be responsible for finding sites to dredge spoils? Who's responsible for that?
The local sponsor, which is the state who's delegated it to us, Calitz County. So the original sites were found at that time, in the 80s. Wash dot real estate did all of the contract negotiations. And since that time, they said, no, we don't want to be doing that. So once the SRS was built, they kind of put it on the counties. So the local sponsor is responsible for finding the dredge spoil sites, handling all the environmental permits and those requirements, which is why the state does the fish handling. And when they dredge, the local sponsor is responsible for the watering of the dredge spoils, because obviously it comes out as a slurry, so you have to have enough property set aside for it to drain out and handle the water that comes out of it.
And how many options do we have to handle right now?
Right now, we do not have a whole lot of options, especially, I mean, from Kelso to Castle Rock, we have very few options. I mean, we honestly don't. I mean, we have Alpoint down here at the mouth, that would probably take some. I said that wrong, Alpoint, that's not the right name of it anymore. But what we're going to find upstream is going to be difficult. And that's the situation we're in.
Since the mountain went, we've built homes on all those places.
Is that a reimbursement program that the state pays for?
Yes.
So we pay for it out of pocket, and then they reimburse it?
Yes, that's the way it was originally set up. Because right now, we do maintain and manage, there's four to six, I don't have the exact number in my head anymore, monitoring sites that we maintain easements for the Corps to access. And every year, we cut a check to the property owners, and we get reimbursement from the state.
I'm just trying to think of the, so once the dredge spoils go onto the bank, onto those people's properties, who's responsible for the dredge spoils?
It becomes theirs, so they can sell it and do with it as they want.
It becomes the property owner?
Yes.
He owns it?
Yes. And there is a unique state law that dredge spoils from the Calitz River do not have to pay the natural resources, whatever, I think it's a dollar a ton for those materials. It was something that was lobbied very hard for, by this county, to put in there so people would accept the dredge spoils, because if you dig it out on your property and you get paid $1.35 a cubic yard, you do not have to give anything to the state. The dredge spoils that say that the Port of Woodland sell, that come out of the Columbia, they do owe royalties to the state. So it's just, it's a very unusual quirk, and it's just on, from dredge spoils from the Toodle River and the Calitz River south of the mouth of the Toodle. Anything else that's a dredge spoil, you owe royalties to the state.
I don't know, is the old, on the, the Drosier site? Is that still in use over there? I don't.
I believe it is.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, and we are working on selling the dredge spoils out of Cook Ferry. I mean, the county can sell all the dredge spoils out of Cook Ferry. The caveat for the county was we don't have to pay those royalties, but all the money that proceeds that we receive has to go into the Parks Department, because it's on public lands, so. But we can build some great soccer fields and fishing piers.
Got to find a use for that stuff and get it going.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I see we have our guests. I need just to put in break, and we'll get Bob and Shawna up there.
This thing here, you know, the.
Yeah, it was fun having, it was fun having them in, yeah. Okay, I don't know, we have a huge agenda, but it's always nice to touch base on a regular basis. I do want to publicly thank you for the help when we were working with PUD and trying to arrange that. It's a little deeper than just a money issue, and I think PUD needs to work some of that out, but the help you gave to at least get to chat, I think, we appreciate that, appreciate that help.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think it was a really helpful conversation for me too, to directly talk to the PUD and hear how complicated and how many factors were going into that project.
Yeah, they had a lot going, a lot more going on than I understood at the beginning, yeah.
Yep, and that's really important for us to know too, right? If you're going to have a project like that try to get across the finish line, you kind of have to find all the resources and, you know, put a big old puzzle together in the right sequence and have the right timing. And, you know, unfortunately, the additional funds from the state weren't going to get there, but, you know, it always is good to have the governor's office attention on something like this and get everybody at the table and try to see at least. And if anything else down the road, there's awareness and that opens up doors, so.
Yeah, absolutely. You guys got anything new that you needed, wanted to touch on?
I think Shawna has some updates maybe on the collaborative work.
Yeah.
We just, you probably heard us just kind of went over Army Corps'.
They met with you this week, correct? Is that?
Well, it just came from Susan, yeah.
Last week, okay, okay, yeah. I heard just through the collaborative that that was, that they were going to be meeting with you, sharing some information about levels of protection and all that, so, yeah. So yesterday, we had our meeting of the Rivers Need Room Work Group, that's part of the collaborative. I think I mentioned this at our last meeting a few months ago. It's a smaller, just, you know, semi-formal work group with, we've got Porter Longview, Adam from Building and Planning, Larry Hembry's on there, someone from the Calitz Indian Tribe, Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership, Fish Recovery Board. So pretty good representation of kind of the key issues, basically just to talk through things that we can actually do in the lower Toodle and Calitz, because the collaborative is really about information sharing. You know, it hasn't led to a lot of, there have been some actions. There's a lot of work, because I think you all know about the stuff going on, like the North Fork Toodle around the sediment retention structure upriver from that. Of course, all the Spirit Lake stuff that's going on for updating that, like fixing, you know, fixing some issues with it with the Forest Service, fish collection facility. But this is really more of those downriver areas where the sediment is, you know, piled up and causing water quality, bank stabilization problems, property damage. So really looking at some things that we can do to actually do something. So we had a meeting yesterday in Longview, had a good meeting. We basically came up with like our, kind of our vision statement. It's our fourth meeting. And then started working on next steps for the, and I know the Council. And then started working on next steps for the, um, and I know the council of governments, Bill Fashioning and Sam are taking a lead on, um, a, basically looking at some potential commercial use of the dredge material, right? And that stuff that you were just talking about, right, that finding a use for would be really nice. Um, getting it out of the floodplain, both for restoration and in some cases, um, you know, fish habitat, but also just opening up, broadening that floodplain, you know, you're, it, you're basically, if we can't do dredging uh, in that lower river, at least opening up the floodplain, it does allow for more water to flow, right? Um, i- in a flood event. Um, anyway, so looking at things we can do with the dredge material, uh, we're looking at some community engagement opportunities as well, um, to try and get the pub, the public's perspective on what are some projects that would be important? You know, and just kind of not like looking at it just from the expert perspective, but what do the people that live there, what are they concerned about? What, um, what would they like to see done, so we can, to kind of help us prioritize? The, those were some of the things that we talked about at the meeting, so it's been encouraging. It's, it feels like an opportunity to really be able to talk to people about the issues and, you know, actually come up with some, some kind of a path forward, so.
Sounds like a smaller group and probably easier to, to do that.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, on that note, I would just say, uh, I'm making a trip south to Vancouver with the new director for ecology and it's a pretty tight schedule, but I'm going to try to take a quick detour, um, on our way back north to go to the site that we looked at, um, right next to the
Alblan Gun Range there?
Yep.
Yeah.
And just give him a snapshot of kind of what, what it looks like and talk about some of the issues that we've been talking about to raise that, um, just for his awareness and, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here with the collaborative and other work groups, as well as working with you and trying to find solutions that, that might work, so, um, I might just not ask and take a quick detour with him, but, uh, but again, it kind of just depends on how the day plays out, um, and, um, you know, he's got a family trying to get back to, back to too.
But it's not that far off the road.
It's not, right?
You're right there.
So, yeah, I'll just tell him we're stopping for chips or something.
Yeah.
Just keep going, pass the gas.
You gotta stop for gas, yeah, don't fuel up on the way down.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, something like that. But I want to give you heads up that this is something that, uh, that of course is a priority, that's why we're here and, um, continuing to work with you on this and try to, you know, elevate it to that level too, just for awareness and I've already talked to him about this, but I think it's just, it's different when you see it on the ground. It's just, you know, seeing the landscape, seeing the magnitude, um, especially things are just changing so rapidly in those areas, so.
Vi- visuals always work best
Yeah.
for me, you know, I, I'm one of those type of people, so.
Yeah.
That works. So he's, he pretty newly came in with the, the new administration?
Yep, mm-hmm, yeah, it's been really great, uh, he's got such a background. He was previously the EPA Region 10 Administrator, um, so very familiar with our portfolio of work. A little different role, he's been, you know, uh, really getting his feet underneath them for legislative session for the past couple of months. So he jumped right in, this is his first position in the state government, so, uh, was learning a lot there, had to get, you know, confirmed and all that too, and, um, but now things are starting to taper off with session and so he's starting to get, get out now, he wants to really see the region, he wants to meet partners. Um, so we've been trying to put together different programs for him. This one is a, he's going to be doing a presentation, um, for the Association of Washington Businesses Conference, um, on May fourteenth. So that's why we're going down for that, but I'm trying to take some, um, stops along the way. We're going to stop in the Chehalis, um, at the Port of Chehalis to talk about their business efforts and some really cool stuff going on there, and then use that opportunity to talk about the Office, um, for Chehalis Basin work around trying to comprehensively addr- address flood risk there and then, you know, uh, come down, meet, go to the Vancouver Field Office, um, and do the presentation with the AWB and and then hopefully on the way back, kind of stop and, and take a look at some of the lower Tudal.
We're meeting with the chamber also, some chamber leaders, right?
The Greater, uh, Vancouver Chamber we're meeting with, um, the director there and then also the mayor, um, as well, so. Yeah, it'll be a packed, packed agenda, but.
Yeah, well, keep, keep them busy.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Just out of, for my own curiosity, and I guess I've never really explored it, what's EPA, your relationship with Fed to state, I mean, is it, they give you directive? Or does the state have some ability to do their own directive for state? I guess I've never really explored how that, how that all works.
I might relate it to state-local, uh, similar kind of partnership there, you know, the, the federal government has certain jurisdiction over certain regulatory processes, um, where the state doesn't. And there's also certain federal regulations that we are also delegated under our authority. So we carry out some of that for the federal government as well, um, which is embedded in our regulations as a state. So I would say it's a state-federal partnership, you know, we work through issues, it's a partnership, just like it is our state-local partnership. So, something like that, is kind of how I'd describe it.
Okay. You talk about legislation, I sent a couple of notes, because I was looking at the website, they're, they're updating floodplain rules to try and help people build a little faster, some, I, I'm just kind of getting the gist of it and I was kind of interested in what that would look like or mean.
So I, I remember seeing that, I think last week when it came out and just reading the blurb. I have limited knowledge of floodplain management laws, but I was like, I don't understand what this is doing. So I followed up with one of our section manager and one of our floodplain managers. Essentially, so it came out of the Office of Chehalis Basin that has, you know, the flooding there, and the bill was actually, the original bill was, um, Senator Braun, um, who introduced that, it's a tan, it's a small community, Bukota, I think, in Thurston County.
Yeah.
Where essentially they're trying to give options to people who live in floodways that are at risk, where um, they can either, I think it's property owners or the local government can seek a waiver from ecology to be able to like do some things in the floodplain that they otherwise wouldn't, including elevating their homes. Um, so it's not, there's not any regulatory requirement, it's really just trying to grant some flexibility there. Um, so that the WAC aligns with the new legislation, if that makes sense.
So.
And I can send you more.
Try and save, save some of these structures before the water comes in and takes some type of
Yeah, because sometimes it's, it's not practical to move out of the floodway for, for people for a lot of reasons, right? So one option would be to, to elevate.
Yeah, I'd say, so in my previous role, I was helping manage some of these, right, you know, these proposed changes and it was really tricky because you, you want to acknowledge the people that are currently at, have flood risk and allow them to do some floodproofing, right? But you also don't want to expand development in a floodway. So it was really tricky trying to get into some of those regulations where if you're taking a statewide approach, right, on regulations, it has to apply everywhere. And so we didn't want to magnify the risk in floodways, but also wanted to provide some sort of relief for the the folks that are already there, already experiencing the impacts and want to do something about it, so, yeah.
And I think there's, actually, I, I grew up in Centraia, Chehalis area, so I remember where the Walmart and all that was or before it was there, that's where water collected, when they built all that up, then other places were flooding. So I always tried to figure out, well, how do they, how do they know that it's going to go right? And, and I think that's what they're trying to address a little bit here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, just, you know, again, give relief to folks, um, who are experiencing it and allow them to.
Being from Centraia, we always called Chehalis Swamp Town, so, underwater, so.
It's complicated for sure, that's why we have a whole office associated with it.
Like Kelso and Longview a little bit, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit of rivalry there. Another thing that piqued my interest, and I know, I think Shawna works with the fish, was the salmon recovery and the, and the toxic chemicals, the work they're doing with that, and just wondering how far along that is or what the expectation is there?
There's a, a couple of things that ecology has looked at, we're pretty involved with the six PPDQ stuff, um, that basically comes off of tires is what the, and they found that it's, so there were Koho salmon that were dying and they weren't sure why, that especially after like big rain events, um, and they, uh, it was a researcher, I'd have been out of U-Dub, um, but they, they basically narrowed it down to this chemical that's associated with tire, pieces of tire that just come off in natural process. So there's that work, we've, we've developed some water quality standards that kind of influence that. I know, I've noticed, I live in Vancouver and one of the things that I see more is the street sweepers that come and, you know, just go through your neighborhood and sweep up all the debris and stuff, and I think that's tied to, to that to some extent. And then the other one that just came out recently is the, um, it's PBDE is the chemical. I don't know the full acronym for it, or the breakdown of the acronym, but it's a, another chemical that I guess is from wastewater treatment. It bioaccumulates through the aquatic ecosystem and then it's Chinook salmon that they looked at. It was ecology, our EAP program, Environmental Assessment Program. Was looking at effects on juvenile Chinook salmon of that. But what I read, I kind of did a quick read through the report and they aren't finding a lot of mortality from that, like the six PPDQ. So I don't know what's going to come of it, it's just one of those things that they were assessing. They did find the source being treated wastewater, um, so it's coming through, you know, the wastewater system, but. So there's not really much, um, I don't know what the next steps will be with that, but they just finished the report, so that was, uh, published, like on our website.
I, I believe we, we also got an increase in funding to continue studying those different areas, because we're just, from what I understand, um, kind of scratching the surface of understanding what the impacts, um, and which chemicals are causing what, um, what kinds of attribution to those, uh, impacts to fish, so. So we, we definitely are going to continue working on that, because it's pretty, it seems pretty significant.
It ju- it caught my attention because I have people from, and you've probably heard this too Shawna, people at Silver Lake always want that tested to see what's in there, can't you take core samples, can't you do this and this? And try and see what's in there, so I didn't know how expansive, uh, ecology was going to be with this, how far are they wanting to go?
Yeah, you know, the, and I did follow up with, um, on Silver Lake with the citizen who was here, and we've had some back and forth. I've sent him a lot of information on, um, you know, lake quality and, uh, we haven't been able to attend there. They had a, I think it's coming up actually, um, sort of a workshop thing that they're having in Tudal.
Yeah.
And I had a conflict and Jason did as well from our water quality, uh, program at VFO, um, but I told him, you know, we're happy to share information on, you know, like our water quality funding and things like that. I'm not real, really sure what, like how, if we wanted to try to see if some of, you know, some of the ecology staff could do some sampling there. Um, I think there's usually a prioritization process, so I don't know. I know we did some work years ago, but, and then it just kind of just sat there in reports, I think, and nothing was really done.
And it's on the grand scheme of things, I'm not saying this is a big thing, it's just one of the, because that's in District Three and I do hear about that, that one, you know, that I get my ear bent every so often.
Yeah.
And the other thing they worry about in your, and you're talking about wastewater creating some things, they worry about old septic systems that are out on the island, they've been around for years and those type of things.
Yep.
Yeah, but to me, usually if a septic system goes, you pretty well know it pretty quickly, if it's, if it's not operating.
Yeah, I believe the tracers of that too, in the water, we would be able to detect, detect, you know, that source.
Yeah, and Silver Lake does have elevated, um, see, it was temperature, I think PCBs as well, um, there's a few things like, uh, I, I know I s- um, I sent this in an email to, his name's escaping me. Joe? That doesn't, okay, um, because I looked it up on our Water Quality Atlas, it's, it, that lake's a little, it's a little messed up, there, um.
Will we adjust the, the level of it, does that affect any of that?
I think there's different opinions on whether that works or not, um. You know, they also tried to introduce the fish, the carp to try to manage the vegetation, and then like on the one hand, reducing the vegetation does help with oxygenation a little bit, but then it also, um, if you reduce the vegetation, then you, you don't have anything anchoring the sediment and the sediment's where a lot of the contaminants are. So it's kind of a, like, how do you balance that? So, yeah, there's.
And, and that's another thing they talked to me about is the, the bottom, you know, it's not solid any, anymore. I think that's what you're, that's what you're talking about, it's marshy and it doesn't control that, interesting.
Where would the PCBs have come from?
You know, I'm not sure, I, I don't know past uses there or, um.
That's.
Yeah, I really don't, couldn't say.
Other than in transformer oil, I don't know what other use PCBs were used for. I can't imagine how in the heck PCBs could have got into that lake.
Yeah, lakes are really tricky.
Especially in measurable quantities.
Yeah, they're really complex, I mean, a lot of, there's a lot of concerns for a lot of lakes in the state that are going through, at least in the region, something I hear about too, um, Spanaway Lake being the most recent one, where there was some fish deaths and um, pretty significant, and sometimes it takes like six PPDQ is like years. And we still don't know exactly what the ca- contributing causes are and how they're affecting certain, how those chemicals are affecting fish. And so it can take a lot of different, I mean, it could take a lot of investment, um, in terms of funding to do the research needed to identify that. And then sometimes it doesn't, it doesn't equate to any immediate answers, and I think that's really tough for lake environments, so. It is something that I hear a lot and, um, again, the Spanaway Lake one, we were, we were responding to a lot of different, uh, media interests around that and there's no, there's no real clear answers and it's really frustrating, um, and, you know, Fish and Wildlife has a role, Ecology has a role at some, we have our authorities, but then, you know, a lot of that lake management too is outside of our authorities and just understanding the ecosystems as a whole and what could, like what the causes are of some of these things and, um, so it's really tough, I think, a lot of people struggle with it.
That's always a, uh, to me, an in- interesting dynamic. We had wildlife in, uh, last week and I thought it was an interesting conversation. Commissioner Rader is, uh, really good on the outdoor stuff and I thought he had some great questions, but I always wonder how, and I know you have responsibilities too, when we talk about, uh, salmon habitat and that, that type of thing, and I don't, how do you, where does it intertwine or where, where do they draw the limits, say, oh no, that's ecology, or you say, oh no, that's, that's wildlife, I, you know.
Lot of conversations sometimes, yeah, um, sometimes it's not as clear and there's, you know, partnerships, um, where we both work on things together and sometimes it's, you know, depends on the issue itself and what, what authority it falls under and whose agency and, but with the Spanaway Lake one, we were working directly with Fish and Wildlife, because it was several, um, complaints that were submitted through our state's, um, it's called our URG system, our environmental, um, reporting system. And so when it goes into that system, it comes through us, but then we network through all the different agencies that could have some role in responding. And so it is a statewide network and, um, that then triggers, you know, Fish and Wildlife responding to us, DNR responding to us, you know, all the different agencies, AG, who might have a role in, in addressing that, um, that issue that's been submitted to it. So, um, so the authorities are clear, but how we actually work on that usually is pretty collaborative between the agencies, depending on the issue, but, yeah.
And I would just add that water quality is, is our, you know, one of our largest programs, if not the largest, um, and because that's such an important variable for salmon recovery, cold, clean water, that, you know, we play, we play a big role in that, um, and then some of the floodplain stuff. But I would say water quality is like the biggest nexus for us with salmon recovery. I mean, right now on Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board, which Commissioner Rader sits on, we have, I'm on there and then we have another ecology staff who's just recently joined as well from the Water Quality Program, um, out of Lacey. And actually, I was going to mention, um, because he's doing some, uh, water quality assessments, just for your awareness, I'm, I'm didn't think until now to make sure that you do know, um, he's doing assessments of several of the tru- the smaller tributaries to the Kallits. So like Arkansas, Ostrander, Alacoa, Delometer, all of those, quite a few, um, I think he's on his second year of basically looking at, he's got temperature sensors, dissolved oxygen, those kind of parameters, um, and eventually with the goal being that we might do a, um, what's it called, the ARP, Alternative Restoration Plan? Which basically just is sort of like, here's some things for improving water quality, it could bump up. It could bump up prioritization with water quality funding from ecology, um, for restoration, um, of the, of those water bodies. So.
Guys, have anything you want to touch on?
Not really. I, I have a lot of thoughts going through my mind, particularly when we're talking about the lakes. Growing up in Texas, there's a lot of lakes and, um, the water's not clean. When I say clean, I mean, it's murky. It's, it's not clear like the waters that we have here. And we obviously have a different, uh, different kinds of fish. But one of the main fish that's prevalent in, in those lakes is catfish and catfish don't have scales. So they're, they're pretty susceptible to stuff in the water, right? Cause they're, they're, they're a smooth skinned, uh, fish. And that was one of the things that they used to say is you could ta- you could judge the, the, the health of the lake based on how the catfish are. Cause they don't have that protective shell, if you will. And, you know, I loo- I look at the lakes down there and there's freeways going over the top of those lakes, around those lakes. All, I mean, just, they're surrounded by freeways and houses and, and all sorts of stuff. And, and there was a, I remember talking to a game warden down there one time and he said that, um, there was a, we saw a bunch of fish that were dead on the bank. And he said, yeah, the, the lake turns over, um, like every five to seven years. And he tried to explain to me what it, what it is. It's where the, the bottom sediment, for whatever reason, you know, goes to the top and the heavy water goes down. And I'm not sure the terminology that he used, but he said, and that oftentimes, um, causes, um, quite a high mortality, uh, in fish. But he says it's a natural thing that happens and it occurs so that the lake can maintain its, its ecosystem. You know, uh, it's, it's a naturally occurring, uh, event. And so I'm not sure, uh, how many things we have that occur in nature that are natural. And how many of them are man caused? And I think ultimately that's the question that we want to, we want to get down to. Really to what extent are we causing a lot of what's happening? And to what extent is a lot of it just natural, mother nature doing its thing? I mean, you know, we, we didn't have anything to do with the fact that there's not a saber tooth tiger running around right now. So mother nature eliminates animals all, all on its own, uh, through natural processes. And, and, uh, I, to me, that's one of the, it, I, I would rather not see us trying to, to villainize, uh, something to protect a, a, a specific animal and just find out really to what extent human beings are impacting mother nature. You know, and, and to what extent is it just natural? And the unfortunate side of it is, is that science, um, I said this before, science is a, a liquid. It's, it's constantly in flux and in motion, you know? A lot of people think that it's stable, but it, it's really not like we just, you guys have said, we just learned, uh, Susan just said, oh, well, because we got more data now. What we, what we thought to be true 10 years ago is no longer true. And so because science works that way, um, usually what happens is, is, is money's involved and politics get involved. And, and it just muddies the waters, you know, um, no pun intended on that. But, um, and that to me is one of the things that I would like to see. I would like to see politics get out of it and, and, and the government get out of it and have people who actually want to, um, get to the solution of why things are happening and not worry about any political implication, who's funding what. Unfortunately, science is mostly, the majority of science is funded by government. And so there's, there's drawbacks to that.
Yeah. And I think, you know, exactly what kind of what we just said is, is often it's not as clear. I mean, there's no clear answers to some of this unless you spend a lot of money. Um, and I spent a lot of time and I think that's what's challenging with, in particular with our field is trying to, you know, be careful. Um, as an agency too, of not making conclusive statements when the, when the science isn't there. Around what the contributing causes is. And it could be human, it could be natural, you know? And that's what we're trying to understand more through these processes and, and the research that we do, we rely on others too. Our agency only has so much of a buzz to actually conduct science, right? And collect data and do that work. So I, I think you're exactly right though. It's, it's tough. I mean, I think we, we know now could change in 10 years based on, I mean, look at the advances in technology, what we know now versus what we did even five years ago. It's amazing how much more, um, we can collect. And, and even the visualization tools that we have, now the data processing speeds, all that stuff is, is pretty incredible. So, you know, is it perfect? Probably not. And I think there's a lot of unanswered questions that we continue to try and figure out. But there's a whole lot we're probably not going to learn for a lot longer too.
Well, and I appreciate you guys taking that approach. And that's one of the, that's one of the issues that I have with it is like, you know, because we, we, we recognize that the system isn't perfect. We may find, you know, we're spending two and a half million dollars to build a, a, a fancy named culvert. We may find out in 10 years that it really didn't make that much of a difference. And yet we're allocating a, a massive amount of public funds, taxpayers' money to these projects. When it's kind of like, we're just, I, I mean, I, I don't want to say whimsical. I don't, I don't know that that's the right word. But, um, you know, a, as Susan was mentioning with, with the models, garbage in, garbage out. And, and quite honestly, there's so many times that, um, if you want to get a certain result in science, you just have to have the right amount of money. And you'll get whatever result you want, you know, when it comes to, uh, to scientific research. So I appreciate you guys taking the, the approach that you're taking with it. Um, and understanding that i- it, it is a complex issue, um, and one that I don't know that we're ever going to really resolve. But doesn't mean we, we give up and just roll over either.
Yeah. I mean, that's the role of policy, right? Is trying to do the best you can, make, make decisions in an unclear, uncertain or unpredictable space. And at some point, you have to make those choices with, with information that you have of what are the risks? What's the risks associated with both sides? If we make this decision, we invest this money, what's the risk? If we don't, what's the risk? And that's where, uh, I step out of that arena, um, to some degree. You know, it's up to the legislators and elected officials to make those decisions and.
And the courts in some cases, the culverts, I mean, a lot of that is driven by the court injunction, right?
Drew my court case. Yeah, that's true.
Those culverts, excuse me, those culverts that have been letting fish get through them for 50 years. All of a sudden they were taking out a six foot culvert and put in a 20 foot span for millions of dollars for something that's been working just fine for 50 years. The fish haven't had any problem getting through it. But suddenly because somebody sees a fish upstream from the culvert, now all of a sudden we got to have some fancy complete redo on the thing and make it what somebody else believes is a better answer. Uh, I struggle with that. I don't mind, when the culvert wears out, okay, let's, let's make it better than it was before. Uh, and as society grows, you, you might have to widen the road. So you need a longer culvert. But my God, uh, some of the, uh, extravagant expenses we're going to are just off the wall.
Mind boggling and it, it's, it just continues to increase, you know? It's a lot of money. Yeah.
One of my favorite sayings is statistics never lie, statisticians often do. And I think that's getting us in more trouble than it's people's whims, it's not science. My two cents.
Yeah. And, and I, I think when wildlife was in, I was interested when they were talking about when the commissioner raider, when they started talking about the, the hoof rot. And some of the questions they're still trying to figure out, why is it elk? Why, why don't the deer have it? Why don't some of the other hoofed animals have it? I have a place in Idaho. I've never heard one person in Idaho talk about elk having any of that over there. So, so why is it in our area and not over there? I think there's still a lot of questions there and that was interesting, uh, to listen to. And they're still trying to figure some of that out. I mean.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's only so much money and the priority setting, that's where, uh, that happens at that legislative level. And dictates kind of what, what we certainly prioritize in our agency, what we can spend money on. And, you know, we try to do the best we can to have, make sure the decision makers have the information, but that's our role. You know, we have a little bit of latitude within some of the rules that we have. And we propose, you know, recommendations to legislature to change or make improvements. But, you know, it's, it's tough when you're in a, and things are just rapidly increasing in cost too. So.
Well, a- and it sounds like you guys are taking a collaborative, uh, approach to a lot of things, which we, we appreciate. I mean, you know, given the parameters that we have to work in, we're grateful to, you know, for you guys doing whatever you can do in a manner that is, um, in the public's interest.
Yeah. I mean, coming from a background of shoreline management as a planner, you know, that's one of the strongest, uh, one of the areas I know is one of the strongest partnerships with the state local level. I mean, it's a home rule state, you know? We administer and we help communities develop shoreline master programs and you, you implement them. We have some roles in that, but you know, often it's, it's up to the local jurisdictions, decision-making authority on some of this. And, um, you know, that, that's what holds true in my values is trying to make sure we have a role as a state to help support communities in doing that. But there's no, you know, perfect way of doing, every community does it different, every county does it different, cities do it different. And, um, but trying to allow that level of tailored, um, tailored approach to what matches the community's interest the best and also achieves what the state has given us as goals. I think, you know, that's where it's, that's where you see these really great accomplishments together. But we try, I mean, from an agency, I think we, we do try to be collaborative as much as we can. There's going to be decisions always where that need to be decided in the courts, where there's disagreements, but you know. Yeah. We're trying to avoid getting there to that. And that's what this is about, right? Trying to create some trust, trying to build relationships. And so you can say, hey, this isn't working for us.
That's what I was just going to say. And I, I think these type of things are important. We're not always going to agree or see, I, I, I am sure, but at least we get to know each other. And, and we get a comfortable level of how we can work together. I mean, if you had a, had a need and we could fulfill it, we'd certainly try and, try and do that. I, I have no doubt that, yeah, this commission would try and do that. So.
Yep. And I want, the last thing we want to do is have you guessing what, why we made a certain decision. That, that's avoidable, right? That, there's some things that are in our control and that's one of them is.
And I, you get a lot of that and we see that frustration from the public because they don't always hear how, how things come about. And then the frustration gets pushed out at finally hits that point, right? And so I think, uh, we, we've taken the tact of being really open with, with the public. And we're willing to discuss anything just so they, they understand where we're coming from. And I think, I would say we're last year or so, it's, it's worked pretty well. Cause we don't have a whole lot of controversy that, that really comes forward. They've kind of handled it before that period of time. Now watch next week, somebody will come up and blast this. I, and I, and, and. I, we start promoting this thing probably three, four weeks before and say, this is who we're going to have, this is who we're going to have. Come out and listen to them. And sometimes it, it happens and sometimes it doesn't. But at least we're listening.
Yeah, that's definitely, I mean, it's something that, uh, that I've noticed, uh, in particular with the new director. Is that, that approach and really that value and making sure every, like, working with somebody well in advance of a decision, even being well in advance of a permit even getting submitted. So that the right pathways are identified. Everybody's on the same page, at least knowing, um, kind of what the issues are and just making sure we're providing really good customer service. We may not get there at the end, depending on what the issue is. But we can at least be good, providing really good technical assistance as part of our role as a state, helping all the, helping all the public, um, understand exactly what we're doing. So I certainly see that it's a huge priority for Director Six Killer and it resonates really well with me. So I really appreciate that out of, out of his leadership already.
Yeah.
He's not a lawyer, by the way.
He's not a lawyer.
He's not a lawyer.
He just went up a notch in my book right there.
So I think the, the first, the first non-lawyer director that we've had in, in tw- and certainly 12 years. But I mean, it goes back a long time.
You just pass on it into the commissioner, Dahl Pharaoh and Raider just went up a notch in our book.
I would even, I would say that it's not even that, that the expectation is that we're always going to agree.
Yeah.
Other, as long as we're working together, like you just said, we're collaborating and, and communicating. These are the issues that we're working through because I don't think any of us expect you guys to agree with us all the time. That, that's not a realistic expectation. Um, but the being able to collaborate with each other and know that, hey, you know where we stand. We know where you're going to stand, where you stand, and we know that you're going to do whatever you can to help us and, and establishing that relationship. And that's, that's really all I would say that, that I would personally ask for is, is having that relationship to know that, yeah, you're going to work on our behalf in any way that you can.
And give you advanced note. I mean, you know, it's open communication. You know, I, my cell phone, hopefully you know, it's available anytime you want to give me a call and say, here's what I'm hearing. Tell me what's, what's going on here. Like, um, and just, yeah.
Or if you just want us to gather information, there's something that you're curious about in between these meetings. You know, we have, we're happy to get that. So.
We, we utilize it. I, I, when I talk in front of groups once in a while, I'll, I'll, I'll give them a bad time. I said, you don't really have to agree with me. I always, I'm a pretty open person. I'll tell you what I think your job is to decide whether you like it. Now, if you don't like it, I'll pray for you and hope you come around, but.
Yeah, I may not answer the first time. So much spam on my phone now.
Yeah.
I get, I was counting up the other day. It's like an average of 12 calls, spam calls a day on my work phone. It's like, what did Rich sign me in for here? Like, but.
How do they end up getting all those numbers? It's just, it, I, I hear you.
People trying to sell you stuff.
Yeah.
Probably. I don't, I don't know.
Well, they are listening to us on our phones. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, uh, we appreciate your time and won't take any more of it today. But, uh, thank you again for coming up and visiting with us.
Yeah. Absolutely. Thanks for having us. Good to see you.
Good to see both of you.
Yeah. And I, I think I'm sticking around. I've got a room here somewhere, uh, cause I got to get on a call at 3:30. So.
Oh.
So thank you for offering that.
You got that settled for him?
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks guys.
Do we have Travis coming in? Okay. So let's take a short recess and then we'll have Travis come in. Okay, so let's take a short recess and then we'll have Travis come in. Okay, we're we're back in this, so what do we got? We got IT coming, is. Is he on there? Okay, so we're all kind of sitting here in the dark, we're not sure what this is a about, it was called, so you guys don't have to bring us up to speed.
Yep, there's Travis on me.
There you are.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You'll have to bring us up to speed, we're not sure what we got going.
Okay, um, so I requested this to make you aware of um, a current cyber threat and what we're dealing with and what we're doing about it. And I wanted you to be be aware, um, so I'll go into explaining what that is if you're ready to be, and you can hear me okay? I guess I should introduce myself, this is Travis Fiskini, IT Director. Okay, so roughly two months, two months ago, we started seeing a particular type of threat and um, suspicious network activity was being reported to us by um, a network monitoring device we have, um, and a state network monitoring sensor. And those events were sparse in between, a little bit irregular, slightly concerning. Over the past two months, our um, concern increased as those events started to increase in frequency. Roughly, uh, we were getting roughly a handful a day, went to kind of um, a ha- we're from a handful a week to a handful a day. And then last Friday, we saw a dramatic spike, um, and then there were tens of thousands uh, of these um, reported network flows to the internet. And they were being reported as suspicious because of the destinations that were being uh, that were we that networks, the destination networks that we were communicating with.
Travis, did you say tens of thousands?
Tens of thousands, that's correct, on Friday afternoon. Um, you know, they could be, they could be very small pieces of data, but it's when you assemble or when you look at that many, um, you clearly have some reason for concern. And when you see um, a spike of that nature, there's reason for concern.
Do we, Travis, when you, pardon my ignorance, tens of thousands of what to where?
Yep, there were tens of thousands of network flows, so you know, those are, those could be small, they could be large. And they were coming from inside the Calitz County Network to destinations that were on the internet with known bad reputations. So they get a bad reputation based on um, things that are observed by others going in and out of those. So some of them may have bad reputations for years, some may have reputations for months or days, but and some are worse than others based on the types of track of traffic or the threat actors that are associated with those addresses.
Do we have any way of tracking or knowing where those things originated within the county network?
Since we started seeing these over the past couple of months, we've been trying to understand where they are coming from. And um, that was difficult to ascertain, we've been making good progress on that within the past uh, week. Uh, however, it is difficult to determine, one of the things that we observed was that the traffic was coming from many hosts, not just a small number, but many dozens, um, at least a hundred, maybe hundreds. We started investigating some of those machines very specifically and were unable to find anything to explain why that traffic would be coming from those particular hosts. I'll continue, but I want to make sure I answer your questions too.
We we can't narrow it down to a specific computer or server or some some dead dead center location that we know?
W- w- we have narrowed it down, but we've narrowed it down and we see evidence of information coming from more than a hundred addresses on the network.
So this is not like a virus?
It it could be, it could be, but what we're seeing kind of indicates that the the virus is widespread and that would seem to indicate. And because there are commonalities among multiple devices, that would suggest that there's lateral movement, that something inside of the network continued to propagate um, to other devices to generate similar behavior on other devices. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
I don't know what to do with that information yet, but.
Well, I can tell you, I I was kind of prepared to make you aware of what we've seen and then kind of what we've been doing and maybe what we would recommend doing moving forward. But um, I want to pause there and just make sure that you're kind of caught up and have a general understanding of what we're seeing and what that means.
So has this increased activity, has it caused any issues within our network at this point? Are we just noticing that this increased activity is happening?
Fortunately, um, fortunately, we've not seen significant impact. Um, and it's hard to tell whether or not what we're seeing is likely to lead to something at any moment. Um, whether or not it's something like um, a nation-state actor um, exfiltrating data. It's, there's there are suggestions that by reputation that there are nation-state actors linked to um, and observed um, have observed activity with some of these same addresses that we're seeing that have bad reputations. There's also question of whether or not it's e-crime, whether somebody's doing it for profit and whether or not they just haven't caused impact yet because maybe they're waiting um, till they're can do maximum damage and have maximum um, impact with something like ransomware. You know, if they were to shut down every machine versus shut down a hundred machines, right, we would be more inclined to pay the ransom. It could also be that um, there is indications of command and control where we are seeing activity in the network or addresses that suggest that um, there are things commuting communicating uh, inside and outside of our network that could be controlling things within our network. That could be for lots of reasons, um, there could be somebody out there trying to sell access, uh, you know, to malicious actors. It's hard to tell at this point, there's just a lot of bad addresses and it's hard to tell exactly what the source is or the purpose.
So I see several of these ten top threats that you listed on this email that some of them are malware, some of them are phishing, some of them are unknown, apparently they're a medium threat, and I don't know what army, that's just an extension, apparently.
Yeah, there's, uh, you know, everything on the internet, almost everything on the internet um, is addressed in numbers, but you commonly access it by name. Uh, and there can be, you know, a wild combination of names, what you're seeing there is a combination of names, sometimes those names are as simple as google.com, you know, news sites, other things that you're familiar with, um, but a lot of those names are kind of deviations or variations of names that are popular and well-known. Um, and they can be used for very nefarious purposes, the the ones that are on there in that report um, that you're seeing is is a those have a poor reputation and those are a lot not legitimate, and that's why those are particular examples that are cited on that report.
Okay. Where do we go from here?
Okay. Um, over the, sorry, was there another question?
No.
Okay, great, um, over the past week, particularly since Friday afternoon, you know, we've been um, trying to be uh, perform a lot of investigative work, um, including work in long days through the weekend, the team has pulled together very well, right? Our our intent here is to find the the source of the threat, remediate the threat, you know, find the source, contain it, remediate it. Finding the specific source, it seems very widespread, um, we really want to be Smokey the Bear, right? We want to fight this and prevent it from causing a large fire or being worse, we don't want to be in a situation where firefighters, so we're doing what we can to be as proactive as we can under the circumstances. We've implemented more effective monitoring, alerting, um, we've consulted with um, the Center for Internet Security and they have a SOC. Um, that SOC and that's provided to state and local uh, travel governments uh, for for at no cost. Uh, they're funded through mo- largely through grants, um, and and their cert service, uh, their cert service did investigation and analysis of several hosts that we um, saw traffic on that were suspicious. We've increased our protection by uh, looking for gaps where we didn't have protection already and covering them, um, where we didn't have endpoint um, protection installed, we've been installing that. We also um, engaged risk, um, I think probably in the past couple of days, um, because we recognize that this is probably at a point where we're dealing with um, experts most likely or seasoned pros. And this is something where in the cyber world, we're probably amateurs and it's probably getting to a point where we need to engage experts in order to do forensic analysis to find the source of this. Um, typically that would be in in what I'll call an IR or incident response uh, type engagement. And that's what we're proposing to move forward with. We started discussing with um, the legal team here, uh, what that would look like and what our options are because there's lots of concerns with that. Uh, one of those is, for example, it's it's hard to move forward with some of the um, options that would be prepent presented and proposed in an IR engagement within the funding constraints uh, through the typical procurement channels and um, and so we needed to know how to proceed and and what the impact of that would be. So I've, over the past few days, been in contact with a number of vendors, received a number of proposals to assist us in moving forward. And that those three leading proposals, um, one of them comes from. One of them comes from CrowdStrike, who is a vendor that is recommended or a preferred vendor from the risk pool. When we reached out to the risk pool, they got a list of vendors from the insurance company that they utilize. One of those vendors is also, CrowdStrike is also a leading vendor for incident response based on some market analyst reports that have also cross-referenced. Arctic Wolf is another vendor. We've consulted with them, their tool and their methodology is, is one of the least expensive. But they're not recommended by the risk pool. They also don't have the same comprehensive coverage. They're not necessarily considered the best in class, but they do have a less, a less expensive option. Velocity is another, is another one. I have firsthand experience with them working at another very large company and multiple incidents. And they have a less expensive option, similar to the cost of Arctic Wolf. Their option is especially has specializes in one type of forensic analysis. That's kind of complimentary to CrowdStrike's. One is focused on the network, one is focused on the endpoint. And I would recommend moving forward with those two options. Because of the cost of the velocity option. I think that we can find a fast path forward, provided that I can get assistance from the legal team and reviewing the terms and the purchasing team. Because the cost of that, I think, is probably within our budgetary authority. The CrowdStrike option and proposal that came in is not. That option is, is, I think, just over $100,000. And that would typically suggest that we need to go out for RFP. I don't know how long that would take, but I'm a little concerned that if we need to wait for an RFP, that would, that would take probably days or weeks or more. And while that would be great, because we would get lots of options presented, I'm concerned about the time that would take. So that's kind of a summary of what, what we've been doing and what I would recommend. And the challenges that, that we have moving forward.
Travis, do we know what kind of data has been flowing? Do we know if we've lost anything or what it is?
We do not. At this point, it's unknown. It's also hard to quantify. I think we've taken good steps to contain and slow down the activity. And yet, it's, it's hard to know that. We just haven't had the ability to, we don't have the right tools in place to assess that well.
This might be a question for legal, but is there any way we can do a hybrid? Go with CrowdStrike initially and then have a more comprehensive, you know, answer. If we have to go to RFP, but just so that we can get on this immediately.
Well, I think you were saying CrowdStrike was the expensive one that would trigger an RFP unless we declared an emergency or.
So this is tiptoeing into areas of executive session. I will say that you're correct in the sense that CrowdStrike is the more expensive of the two options. The velocity. According to the terms that Mr. Fratini stated is significantly less.
Yeah, but I, I think you're right, just when we're starting to talk about move into contract negotiations almost, it feels like. And I think you're probably right. We should probably move that to executive session and take.
Before we do that, can I ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
Travis, this report you gave us, this MSISAC Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, are they still monitoring our system?
They are still monitoring our system, however. Because of the volume of activity, they have discontinued alerting. Because it was so excessive, they couldn't, more or less, they couldn't keep up. It was no longer valuable or beneficial to continue creating individual incidents. They couldn't respond to the individual incidents. They basically stated they're no longer willing to continue providing additional information until we've remediated the current circumstance or, or, yeah.
So is it safe to assume that based on this report you've given us that the problem is continuing to escalate? Or is it leveled off?
I think it, I, I would say what I, what I know is that it's evolving. And I think in, I think that report reflects a measurement and quantifies the data in one particular way. I'm not certain. I would, I would suspect that what we've done may contain or reduce that. We're also in the process of working with them to implement an additional service which will mitigate the specific thing they're, they're reporting there. Because they're reporting on one very specific type of traffic. Think we're able to mitigate or contain that. The challenge is that there's already a foothold, there's already some sort of bad actor or threat within the environment. And they've, I think they're evolving and I think there's other types of activity. And that's what we're trying to fight and figure out right now.
Okay. Okay. So let's convene to executive session for contract negotiations. What do you think guys? 10, 15?
I think at a minimum, yeah, 15.
Okay.
The board is extending the executive session for 15 minutes until 2:18 p.m.
Back from executive session, I don't know, no decisions were rendered. I'll turn it over to you. You were going to...
Thank you. Jason Larrain with Prosecutor's Office. Following executive session, we discussed particulars of need and contracting. And it was determined that a specific contract or a specific vendor would address the very needs that we have as a county to prevent certain malicious domains from continuing to impact or disrupt our internet functions. It is our understanding that the IT director, Travis Foschini, contacted Washington County's risk pool and requested a list of preferred vendors. These vendors had prior evaluations by the risk pool. Mr. Foschini performed his own evaluation of those given our needs. And based on that evaluation, he presented to the board a specific vendor CrowdStrike. Based on what has occurred so far, it seems that the competitive bidding and negotiation process was satisfied by WCRP. The vendor is CrowdStrike, and given that the contract terms includes a price that under policy requires board approval, we now need to have Mr. Foschini put on record exactly with specificity what his need is and what he has performed and how it is that this specific vendor is going to satisfy that need. And how it is that this specific vendor is going to satisfy that need. So that board can make approval of any contract above limits.
All right, I just joined as a panelist, I think you're waiting for me to speak, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right, this is Travis Foschini, IT director. Uh, I think I'm responding to the, uh, question of, or providing specificity on why the recommendation, um, to contract with CrowdStrike is being presented. After evaluating, um, the incident response vendors and, um, looking at those who are best of breed and provide the type of services that we need. It was determined that CrowdStrike is one of the leading vendors based on industry reports. They also have leading, well-known throughout the industry, a leading tool, um, used for, uh, malware detection and malware prevention, um, and that tool will also be utilized here. And they were also one of the vendors that were recommended by the risk pool. And the combination of being a leading vendor in the, in the industry, from my own knowledge, also an experience, but also from an industry analyst reports like Forrester. We have recommended, I am recommending that we move forward with them.
Okay. I think we, we just entertain a, a motion up to a, a max dollar amount, I think one fifty is what we talked about.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize Travis to move forward with CrowdStrike and work with them, uh, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, you know, resolve this issue.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, uh, Travis working with CrowdStrike. See anything, we'll call for vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else, gentlemen, think we're good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks Travis.
Yep, thank you.
Keep us updated.
Will do, if, uh, if you'd like updates at any given time, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Jim, you must have something? Well, we're way over time, but yeah.
I don't have my external microphone, so you kids are hard to hear. It's terrible in here, except those gentlemen, I saw a few things. I have a few requests, if I may please. First off, uh, Mr. Raider, pleasure to see you again, I met you at the Calhoun River Conservation Project and Mr. Farrell, I've met on many occasions, uh, over the last forty-plus years. And Mr. Don, thank you. Um, I am chairman for the Conservation District of Calhoun County. And I have been serving on that board for fifteen years as supervisor. Um, and my bringing onboard my specialties, uh, which I developed, uh, with a project that I developed for the county, which was the Reclamation or Divation Project for the Calhouns. Two roof, managing the sediment and sewer lines. That's another discussion.
Turn your mic on, Jim, turn the mic on. Right, right in the middle of the bottom.
It's green.
Okay. It should light up. Okay.
Nevertheless, I vacated in, uh, June first of this last year, the department that I created. And, uh, I, at the county's request. And, and so doing, I was promptly locked out of my office. Now, there was no just cause, there was no termination as far as any misconduct, there was nothing, nothing raised. Uh, the issue was strictly, I was defunded. And that's fine. That's the prerogative of the counties. But when they locked up my office, I was treated in such a way that I couldn't retrieve my personal effects. And the next morning came back to retrieve my library and I had set up temporary office down in the basement. And so I got here to find that some of my stuff was boxed and set out in the public aisle way. I have a very expensive library that I've earned for the last fifty years. And because I've studied, excuse me, composting, environmental science, my specialty in minor was fish. And, but I've worked, uh, for the county the last thirty-eight plus and with a small break in between. With a career in law enforcement, ultimately with Calhoun County Public Works. And then I developed the idea for the reclamation and was given to go for it. So what I'm asking for is, I, I was required to file a paper to retrieve my paperwork, my research, all of my stuff. And I was told I had to pay for copies. And this is not county property, some of it might be on Siroc's paper, but most of it's all at my expense. There are research papers that I've done all across the country and communicated with designers, et cetera, uh, as I refined my project. Key to today is a stack of papers that I can't see if that's Bailey there or not, so, um, my training papers for conservation, very distinctively conservation paperwork. When you train as a supervisor, they send you off to school, which is great. And you receive, uh, tutorial sheets that are sealed in plastic. They're supposed to last you for as many years, well, I've been now fif- more than fifteen years. And I refer to those things quite often, now that I'm chairman, I'm, got a lot more responsibility. I want my dead gum paperwork, I don't feel like I should have to pay for it. Because it belongs to the state conservation. And so I'm asking, please, would you so advise, uh, your very beautiful and very assistive secretary, please, will you relinquish me back my property, it's not proprietary to you in any way whatsoever, in fact, there are four white, yellow and black totes filled with a ton of my work that is non-proprietary. And I've gone to the, the county rules and it follows under standard definitions for proprietary, yet I'm told the, the county deems it proprietary. And I have to pay for each and every, every copy, you're gonna have them. I'll, I'll just abandon it, you type of thing, so I'm asking, please, may I have my paperwork? There are tools, et cetera, that the county confiscated that are mine. But I'm asking for a second opportunity to meet with you gentlemen, excuse me, over the other property and effects. And, uh, negotiating, if, if you want to say it that way. Uh, the final separation from the county terminated, uh, was called terminated instead of defunded. It, it's an interesting read, but I'm asking for another appointment with the three of you. I got off work today to pay my taxes and so the chairman's here.
Right, e- everything we've done with that went through the attorney. Everything we've done with that was, was strictly by their direction, and so I'm not changing attorney's direction. If the attorney wants to change their direction and offers some other way of doing it, we'll certainly listen to that, but, but I'm not, uh, going against their suggestion and their recommendations.
I would like the attorney then to post his interpretation of au- authorizing him to advise you to seize my personal effect.
You work for the county, it's like when I left the credit union, everything I did for them was done for them and, and I didn't grab up my stuff and, and, and go, I mean, I grabbed my coat and stuff like that and pens. But, uh, the work I did for them was for that institution. You did a lot of work for the county that becomes part of the county. That's the interpretation that came to us.
And the presumption is that they paid for it.
Well, if, if we paid a salary for how many years?
Played for my department, sir, just under a year. I would love to be able to.
You were employed by the county for a lo- longer than a year.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah.
But I developed that department and got the go-ahead from the commissioners. Just, just before that G day, it would have been one year, July.
Well, I, I'm not gonna sit and belabor this point because we run it by the attorney, we ran every single thing we did by the attorney. And, and I'm not changing it, you, you're not gonna get me to change anything, I mean, if the attorney wants to change something, that's up to him, but it's not up to me.
Then put, bring, bring it forward, we need to have a hearing.
Well.
Because I do know and have read, sir, and have worked in three different capacities for this county, the reach of the attorney, but not to argue. But the conservation stuff is pretty obviously not yours and I am requesting.
Do, do we give funds to the Conservation District?
I'm sorry.
Do we give funds to the Conservation District, do we help support that entity? The answer is yes, yeah.
But do you go with, you agree by that?
Jim, we've had this conversation times before, this is just to repeat. Uh, you're in here because you got two new commissioners that you're hoping to swing your way. And, and, uh, I actually find this fairly offensive because we've been through this, you know what they've said. We've done everything that they, they told us, we did it by the book. And you're wanting us to change and you want to change because you got two new people you think you can talk to. We'll talk to them, but quit wasting our time here.
Excuse me? Okay, I did not come to defy you, I actually came for the conservation material which is rightfully theirs. Through me. So, anything else, gentlemen?
Well, I don't know a whole lot about it, but I can, I wish we'll say this, when I, uh, retired from the mill, all of the training that they sent me to, all of the manuals and everything, uh, the mill considered that to be their property. So I had to leave all that there, I got to take my certificates that I graduated from that class, but that was all I got. All the manuals and everything for all the electrical drives and GE training and, and et cetera, et cetera, that I went through. I, I didn't get to have any of the manuals or the notes or anything I took through that training, so if that's similar to this, I guess I don't know. Okay.
And no, I'm not trying to, really I'm not.
I understand.
Yeah. Part of the nays is, I designed a shop in, uh, Republic Works for the that was valued at a little over five hundred thousand dollars, most of the materials in there I donated. All of the time that I spent building that, I did, and I donated, I was paid for my regular job.
But it had nothing to do with making the safest shop in the nation that got federally recognized. And I don't have a problem walking away when I'm tired out. Leaving all my stuff behind because it was built for my safety and my successors. Sometimes take a look at it, I don't mind seeing somebody going, well, proprietary wise, you know, you built this here. It doesn't make any difference that it's your farm materials that did it. I am purposefully throwing that out there because that can be construed as proprietary. Even though I didn't get one single dead gum donation or the only recognition I ever got was federal. Afterwards, county finally came in with accolades out there, but I did that for people. So, and it's the same thing, county was asked to put me on the federal board for education for chemical herbicide specialists. I didn't want to, and I went on to lead that while doing my regular job, thirty-one hundred educational recipients, students. And we built up a reputation with the state that they came to us. And yet, all of the information, all of the data I put together to do that was on my time. But I gladly neglect herbicides, that you have a right to, it's built on your premises. But I've got books in there on fish that were my stuff in college fifty, excuse me, five years ago. Uh, I've got papers in there shared by different researchers back and forth as we, as I tried to lead the collaborative to do the right job and to actually get busy and do a job. And that's dredging and soil stabilization, et cetera. That's what I did. So I, I've experienced, uh, Mr. Doll, never before in this conversation. It's my first time actually talking to you and I was, uh, I'm not humiliated, I'm old. That's what's nice about this mess. I do know what proprietary property is and your attorney didn't advise you unless you made a phone call. Because I gladly talk to him and show him what the proper definition application is.
Wait, I, uh, help me understand if these were things that you were doing on your time. If this was stuff that you were doing on your time and it's your property, why was it here at the county?
I lived out of temporary offices once I left public works. And then really left public works, I was asked to develop my project. And so was starting to put together a program that I had to authenticate and get permitted. But, and so funding commissioners gave me the opportunity to come here just before I left, everything prior to that. You're, you're gonna, I get taken hours and I promised not to. But I was asked to get rid of Scott's broom off of those ash floors, nobody else knows how to do it. So I figured it out. Didn't have any time, I was doing eleven hundred and fifty miles of roadway three times a year doing my weed abatement for years, all but maintaining children, excuse me, road quality. I was also handed, I did maintenance on several curbs. The first had got the largest grant ever for not weed eradication, excuse me, in my hearing. Not weed eradication on the Montagnan, the Abernathy and the Lewis. All of that got done because I'd have to stay after work because there was too many miles of it and we were being paid on a limited accounts. So I did it, that's just me. And in the meantime, I still had to develop a shop that was the embossing helping shop in the world. It made me sick to walk in, but I needed a job, so I figured that's a couple hours dirty in the morning, stay a couple hours every night. And a couple of hours to miss is two in my hour and, but that's always been me. It all worked for my time. And I developed this project. You're a kind of a lot of pushing time.
Okay.
All my, they're gonna, they're gonna, it's all on my part. I did not get paid contrary to what I, they wanted to say, I never got paid for squat. Except my regular spray job. But it was fun to work from my office and develop the national contacts and all of the scientific other projects out there that I studied. To bring it to a pool to come up with an answer that is actually very fine. So I apologize for my speech, I don't have it good anymore in this, I really said it close to someone, so thank you, Mr. Doll, but, uh, I'm not quite certain what to say now. But I would like my stuff back, please. And you have tools, two rifle cases of mine that held my soils tools, that's what I do. The, the biggest one really ticks me off, the state gave me two aquatic mowers that had been decommissioned because they were falling apart. And they drove, they, they drove them down here for recycling. Got permission from their bosses to give to me because I was such a do-it-yourselfer, rebuild and did things. And use them. And so they're setting down.